Okay, it is 6:30 so we will call this work session out of order. This is a work session on municipal court and setting one up. And after the meeting's over, we will take questions on municipal courts only. If that's what this is about, if there's any questions or anything else. I guess we'll turn this over to Jim because he's sorry, I'm trying to find it.
In the microphone. I hear you saying, can I help?
Um, I think those are ready to be slid in.
It's a whole package. Is it a package?
Yeah. And I apologize, I was unaware that the toner on my printer was beginning to fudge out.
Is this an ink machine?
No.
No, no. Our system's going to turn.
Mine probably does, but it's a poor contractor that owns the schools. Nothing wrong with the printer. Okay. You can organize these, which are your committees. Please just take a moment and go through the first page is largely what you had at the last meeting. The second page begins to go into some of the logistics of the different issues that we're talking about. Really at the top of the list is what type of court do you want, of record or not of record?
Well, I'd go with a court of record.
Well, there's pros and cons to both. The pros of it being of record is that there is a verbatim representation of what happened at the hearing. So it's either the electronic means or a stenographer, and there's no question about what was said or done. And that's really a good thing. It provides confidence in the proceedings. With regards to the pros and cons however, if you have a court of record, then you're going to have to have some type of a recording device, be it a tape recorder, I guess it's probably an anachronism, some type of a digital recording device, or you could go with a stenographer. But really what the translation is, is if it's of record, you've got to have a judge who's an attorney as opposed to a court of not record. The judge simply needs to be a person with a high school diploma or a GED, an equivalency The other major difference between the two is that an appeal from a court not of record is brought to the county court, in this case it would be Gunnison County Court, and there the issues are reviewed de novo. That means from scratch.
It's not well worth it.
Yeah. So if you have a court of record, the appeal is held by the district court under the same terms as the court would hear an appeal from the county courts. So, court, yes?
A court of no record would somebody that lives in that can possibly, it could be any just natural person that lives in Pittkin has a high school or a diploma or a GED, or did they even happen to be here?
They don't have to be electors of Pittkin unless by ordinance you so determine. If you look, attached at the back, a couple of exhibits that are just copies out of the statute books. Exhibit A talks about appointment and removal of a municipal judge. Exhibit B provides the qualifications, and I would just have you look at that for just So the qualifications of a county judge in Class D County as set forth in Section 136203 Sub 3, read as follows. The county judge shall be a qualified elector of the county for which he's elected or appointed, and shall reside there so long as he serves as county judge. In counties of Class C and Class D, I skipped Class A and B counties. Class C and Class D, a person is not eligible for appointment to the office of county judge unless he or she has graduated from high school or has successfully completed a high school equivalency examination as defined in Section 2233102 Sub 8.5 CRS. Five judges elect who have not been admitted to practice a while shall not take office for the first time as county judge until they have attended an institute on the duties and functioning of the county court to be held under the supervision of the Supreme Court unless such attendance is waived by the Supreme Court. Judges who are attorneys and who are taking office for the first time as county judge may attend this institute if they wish. All judges are entitled to their actual necessary expenses while attending this institute. The Supreme Court shall establish the institute to which this subsection 5 refers, and shall provide that it be held when the appointment of a sufficient number of non-lawary county judges warrants as determined by the Chief Justice. So that's the criteria for a Class D county judge. Really, we're talking about just having a high school diploma.
My concern with that here in Pittkin is that, you know, I can't imagine somebody here being a judge. I mean, I'm disliked by people in the community because I'm on the city council. I mean, I can't imagine being a judge, you know, or, and I know it wouldn't be a council member, I understand that, but that'd be a, that'd be a big thing to ask somebody. I mean, so I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards a court of record. The last, the last court case in Pittkin was in the 1980s. I mean, so it's not a, probably not going to be a real common event, you know?
I don't anticipate that there's going to be a sudden flurry of cases.
Right. So, you know, I know, I know it may be difficult to find the attorney that will be a municipal court judge for the town, but it's going to be a pretty rare, potentially a pretty rare event.
I think so.
Yeah.
But I think you gotta look at the, at the same time and say, if it's a rare event, do we want to go through the machinations of having an attorney as opposed to you can have a, you can do your court in Gunnison and have it not be of record and still have a person who's not an attorney but just not necessarily resident of Pittkin. So you have that luxury. You don't have to say, we're going to have someone serve as a judge who's necessarily an elector of the town of Pittkin. So...
Who would determine that person?
That would be the board.
This board?
Yeah, the Board of Trustees.
I just kind of feel like...
I think if it's a big enough issue that's going to court, that, I mean, is there, I mean, I don't understand the, what is the reason not to have a court of record?
It's less expensive. There are, it's rarely done, it's pretty uncommon, and it's generally in really small towns such as the town of Pittkin. But why, why did those municipalities choose to go not of record? I don't know. I'm guessing just logistically it was simpler.
Well, I can understand it's a town of eastern Colorado, a farming community where, you know, it's, I mean, but here, I think it's...
I gotta tell you...
Is that that of an issue? I think the sheriff is going to be handling it anyway, probably not one of us, you know, if it's, if it's that big a deal.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it's typically going to be the county sheriff and that.
Well, we're talking, we're talking about like nuisances and violations of your ordinances.
Okay.
You're not talking about stuff that the sheriff would necessarily get involved in.
Yeah, okay, but there was a shooting or something.
Yeah.
He won't get involved in.
If there's a shooting...
Our ordinances.
Okay, we're talking, we're having our work session. If there's a shooting, that's going to be something that's going to be raised up in the state's statute.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because he don't even have an ordinance with regards to shooting people.
Right.
Yeah, right?
No, 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 that's not something I anticipate you ever having.
Somehow it would be better to, to, to have a judge who was first in law.
I think there should be a benefit to it, if only for the credibility that an attorney who's also a judge carries as a part to a person who's just profoundly wise and has a lot of common sense could serve as a great judge. But to outsiders, they might not perceive that it has that same level of credibility.
Right, yeah, right.
And I feel like Pittkin already has kind of a credibility issue where it comes to law and law enforcement and, you know, being just a little town that doesn't have much going on, you know? I mean, I feel like if there's something serious, it ought to go for court of record. That's just what I think.
Well, Ken, and ultimately what I had envisioned today was working through these issues and discussing them. Nothing can happen until the Board of Trustees approves an ordinance. And so I'm just trying to get a feel for it. James, you got something to say?
Well, when you're through, yeah, what about traffic violations? We do have an ordinance against speed limits and so forth.
And who's going to enforce it?
Yeah, would that be the municipal court?
Who's going to write the ticket?
Well, if the mayor is, I mean, that's something that would be...
Hopefully someday, if we, if we do this, we can, we can, we can find a person who would serve as a, as a constable, at least part-time.
Well, nest before eggs.
But we have to have this first.
Yeah, I'm not, what I'm trying to outline and propose is nothing to do with whether or not at some point in one year, two years, 10 years, you decide to have a part-time constable. Really got nothing to do with that at all.
What would that be, but would that go to the municipal court?
If you had a municipal constable or whatever you want to title them, and they had the authority vested in them to write tickets of that nature, then they certainly could write them into municipal court. But that's, like I said, pretty far down the pike.
Yeah, but that wouldn't really have any effect on what it's, which, which way you would...
That's, that's correct.
Jim, is this kind of the critical issue, deciding whether it's a court of record or a court of no record?
I would submit to you it's the first issue. Because that kind of helps outlines the issues after that. Because if you decide to go of record, okay, then you gotta get an attorney, and you gotta have a recording device, and you gotta consider, you know, do you want to have an attorney driving out to Pittkin for doing a court here? Do you want to have an attorney from Gunnison with less travel expense? So I would submit to you, the initial question is actually, are you guys on board with creating a municipal court? I think it's appropriate, I think the statutory basis is pretty clear.
Yeah, there's not a lot of question there, is there?
I don't think so. The statutes provide somewhat of a room on a lot of the issues for homo municipalities, but some of the things in terms of like arresting minors or the manner in which the municipal judge is compensated, those are untouchable. We'll talk about compensation in a couple minutes. But with that being said, I would submit to you, if the first question is yes or no to creating the court, that's been answered yes. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
And then the second question would be, okay, what flavor? Of record, not of record? I have not heard anyone speak up in terms of not of record. Is there anyone that prefers that? So when I draft this ordinance, I'm going to draft it to be of record. And let's move on then to the next point. After we address the record or not of record, there's a number of questions, but not necessarily in any specific order. The one that I had written down next was, where would the court meet? If you meet in Pittkin, you, I don't see why you couldn't do it here, I don't see why you couldn't do it in the town hall, but the question becomes, you're going to have to have an attorney come out here, they're going to charge some dough, and does it make more sense to do it here or do it in Gunnison?
You had mentioned at the last council meeting that, you know, you had talked to the court there about...
I spoke with the city court, Gail Davidson, and asked her if she thought that we might be able to work something out, an IGA between Gunnison and the town of Pittkin, in which Pittkin used the city council chambers which Gunnison Municipal Court uses.
Okay.
And she seemed amenable to that. Now, obviously that wouldn't, she doesn't have the authority, I don't think, to bind the city, she would have, have to go to the city council, but I think that that's a great first step, just to see if that's a possibility.
I think somehow it would probably be, be better to have it there than to have it, than, than to have it here because, because like I said, the attorney would have less travel time, and they've got the facilities, you know, I think it would be better because, you know, right now, you know, this building's being heated, you know, but what if it's not at some point? What if the, if for some reason you have to have a court in, in the winter, for some reason this building's not being heated?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've always been told that folks in the town of Pittkin are tough, so, yeah.
Well, they have to boot up.
I agree, I think, it'd be a workable justice, it'd be a good place to do that.
Yes, if we could do it, I'd somehow think that that would be better, because we would have a bona fide court. Okay. Is there anyone that wants to do it here within the Board of Trustees? Rand, you being awfully quiet.
A little disconcerting.
Okay, so, when would the court meet? The Gunnison Municipal Court meets approximately two times a month except for the month of July. Given the number of cases that have been raised in Pittkin in the last, I don't know, 30 years, I would say that suggesting that it meet even at all at any time is unnecessary.
Well, I mean, it could be just as needed.
And if you look in, in my little, little memo here, I was suggesting that something along the lines of not to exceed once a month on an as-needed basis. So if for whatever reason there were two cases in a rough proximity of time, you wouldn't have to have another court date two weeks later, that seems a little bit silly. You know, I just, that would be my suggestion, once a month.
Once a month or as, as needed.
Well, as needed, but no more than once a month.
Right.
Okay, the next one will be well beloved by my neighbor to my right, Ms. Deutsch, who would be the clerk of the court? I think that the logical appointment would be to have Nancy Deutsch serve as the clerk of the court. And I don't mean Nancy Deutsch the individual, I mean in her role as the town clerk.
The town clerk, whoever it is.
Yeah. And whether or not that would require additional compensation, that's a decision that the Board of Trustees would make at some point as we're going forward.
What about the judge? Did you skip the judge?
Yes, I did. So let's look at number four. Who would be the judge? We've now determined that it will be an attorney, and so that creates some narrowing of the issues. My suggestion would be that the process would be to publish a notice, making a RFP request for proposals, in terms of judges that are persons that are attorneys that are interested in serving, and see what the proposals are, and then probably have some type of a, an exciting executive committee or meeting without anything being recorded to talk about the personnel matters in terms of...
Can any attorney do it, or do they have to be certified to be a judge?
Any attorney that's licensed to practice and good standing. They have your license to practice for the state of Colorado.
So typically probably we meet some attorney that's practicing in Gunnison, in Gunnison County.
In all likelihood, yes.
Or aggressively, somewhere in Gunnison County.
When I interviewed for the judge position in Gunnison in 2005, I don't know why, but the city of Gunnison did in essence a cattle call and asked questions of all the candidates on TV in an open room with everybody present. I would submit to you that that's not the way to go about running a railroad. They used to have their meetings broadcast on RMTV Channel 14, and so it was a room full of folks much like this, but the candidates were forced to answer interview questions, and it was, I thought that process was inappropriate. I would submit that interviews, probably being that the personnel matters could be done in executive session, and that's certainly a lot more sensitive to their privacy, the candidate's privacy, as well as to the decision-making process. And so I would suggest that if you pass your ordinance, you start building the blocks, and then you publish some type of a request for proposals in the Gunnison Country Times, run it for a couple of weeks, contact attorneys that people know, and just get the word out and see, see who's interested. You know, if you get no inquiries, then maybe at that point a court of record makes more sense. And going back to your question, why would...
A court of not of record.
A court of not of record, why would a town be a court of not of record? They might not have had any attorneys, 50 miles.
Yeah, but that, can we at that point determine that?
Absolutely, and when the, the ordinance is drafted, it's going to say that at this time, the town of Pittkin's electing to be a court of record, but reserves a right to change their minds on some future date. You know, we'll craft it so that it's inherently flexible on that issue. So who would be the judge? Who knows? It would be an attorney that is relatively nearby to the city of Gunnison that expresses interest.
Open the base.
But that gets us to question six, and I touched briefly on compensation for the court. Compensation for the court, I think is a personnel matter, is first of all, I don't think it's appropriate even going into it at this point in time, you know, draft your ordinance and then start looking to enact some bolts of it. But with that being said, the statute, and I believe it's what has been attached as the exhibit C, the very top of the page, it addresses compensation of municipal judges. The municipal governing body shall provide by ordinance for the salary of the municipal and assistant judges. Such salaries shall be a fixed annual compensation and payable on a monthly or periodic basis. The municipal governing body may pay any substitute judge appointed pursuant to Section 1310105 Sub 1 Sub B based upon the number of court sessions served by such judge. Now, the statute says that that's the way it's got to be done. In the applicability section, which I provided you at the last town meeting, it really states in pretty clear detail that that provision cannot be ignored or modified. So the question becomes, how do you compensate your judge on an annual basis when...
He may have nothing all year.
You presumably will have nothing all year. And, and I don't know how to do that, it seems to me that...
Could you have essentially a nominal amount, and then if there were a court case, there would be additional compensation?
That would be my anticipation, but it becomes a question of whether if there was a suit brought by the state of Colorado or somebody, whether or not that would pass muster. Do I think it's likely that, that compensation for the judge would be the basis for a lawsuit? No. But when in doubt, you comply. And so the question becomes, how can we fashion...
It doesn't, but it doesn't say the amount, it just says a annual amount payable monthly.
Yeah.
But, and that could be a...
Ten bucks.
Or fifty bucks a month or something, six hundred, and, but, but then if there's a court case, then, then that's additional.
I think that's ultimately what I recommend, but I would certainly encourage, make the candidates put on the thinking caps and tell you how they want to get paid.
Yeah, because they would need to bring us proposals.
Uh-huh.
No, because they could go years with nothing.
Hopefully that's the way, yeah. They would be independent contractors, they would not be employees.
Right.
And one of the things I put at the very bottom was asking Nancy to contact Sersa and see if there are any insurance issues that would be in play. And I can't imagine any, but nonetheless, I think that that's something...
It wasn't even that much with Boris Sersa.
Okay. So the compensation, I think, would be ultimately something along the lines of you had suggested that, something nominal amount, whatever it is paid on an annual basis, and then a supplemental amount.
For an actual court case.
Yeah.
Take it by day or by hour or whatever it is.
Finally, miscellaneous, pardon me, miscellaneous details, nothing happens until you guys enact an ordinance. And you've got to put all of these little issues into the ordinance, and everyone has to be happy with them, which can be done as quickly as, I can have something for you to review at the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, it can be done that quickly. But even then, that's not going to comport with the publication notice, so we're not going to be having any votes on this for...
Several months.
Yeah.
At the earliest.
Yeah.
Can you model the ordinance after some other small town that does the same, or is it...
I can certainly contact some of the judges in some of the smaller communities, especially out in the eastern plains, and see what they have to see if they've got something that would be usable. I certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Right, or miss something, you know?
I'm also going to spend some time looking at a bunch of the ordinances for the town of Gunnison. I, I think that that is just, it's just good sense.
I think so too. We might will look at what other towns have done, and know this isn't going to be, I know this is not going to be voted in at the next meeting by, by anyone, certainly it's going to be at times, but it's better to take our time and get it right.
Given that you haven't had a case...
Yes.
Since, I believe, Ronald Reagan was president, I think that you've got the luxury of time.
Yes, but we need to have this in place for someday.
It's, it's the right thing to, to do because that's what you're supposed to do.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the boards, members of the boards of the Board of Trustees?
So the next step is we draft a preliminary ordinance based on what we decided to do tonight?
Absolutely.
And we were talking about that.
That's correct, okay. And I think that expectation-wise, maybe you get to vote at the June meeting.
Okay.
I think that's a legitimate expectation, just in terms of going over a really rough draft next week. And then if it's, everything's perfect and it gets, you know, the order to publish, then great, but I would anticipate that it might be something that you go over a couple of times just to, to make... just to make sure that it's exactly what you want. Okay? Are there any other questions from any of the members of the board trustees?
On this bond, can the board of the town of Pittkin pay for that bond? Or is that an expense that has to be added through the?
Well, take a look, take a look at Exhibit C, James. It provides that there shall be a $2,000 bond or such amount as set by ordinance. So there is some flexibility there. It really doesn't identify much beyond that.
Who pays for it?
Presumably the town of Pittkin should pay for it.
And we know what affects the salary. Bonds are very cheap.
Understand this, Eddie. It doesn't say a bond for the judge. It only says a bond for the court of the court. And I don't think it's going to be a financial backbreaker by any stretch of the imagination. You just get it put in place and call it good. Any other questions?
Okay, I'll be ready to wrap this up.
Well, certainly, but I think that...
Yeah, when we're done, I wanted to ask if anybody actually had any questions.
Absolutely. Okay, but anybody, does anybody?
At the last town meeting, you referred to that if we didn't have the municipal courts, we were going to have to go back and review all the ordinances.
Yes, ma'am.
And work on those. Will the ordinances still have to be reviewed to make sure they fit in with this plan?
I probably should endeavor to do so as a long-term project was. But really what I was talking about was if you've got no court and you've got reference to court in your ordinances, there's an inherent problem. If you have a court, then there's much less of a problem. Now, like I said, at some point, I'd like to make that one of the long-term projects to make sure that everything that's from years and years ago does work with, that the court is established. But I don't foresee there being a huge problem simply because what I have seen just references, if thou shall violate this ordinance, then thou shalt be brought before the municipal court or something to that effect. But it really doesn't go into details. Okay?
Any other, any other questions?
Jim, I just have one quick question. Do you have a rough estimate, any idea of what it possibly would cost to have a court?
I have the foggiest notion. But when we think about what we're talking about, we're talking about having a judge with some annual salary plus a salary for each court day. If the annual salary is de minimis, we'll call it $100. The court of the court would probably have some baseline annual salary, probably analogous to that as well, $100. If there's no court sessions, then we really don't see there being additional expenses. Will there be expense for using the city of Gunnison's council chambers? Possibly. I don't imagine that they'll be unreasonable. So that's why I'm not trying to say I don't have any idea whatsoever. I'm just saying, just in terms of what that number would be, I can only kind of talk about what the different steps are. The city of Gunnison has some pretty spendy court software, which probably would not be appropriate for what the town of Pittkin will need. So I don't think it's going to be a huge expense. Can everything be done on an annualized basis at less than $1,000? Presumably. But it's really very difficult to tell you at this point what's going to happen in 10 years. I'm just saying, the startup costs you're looking at, my time in addition to my normal duties and getting this draft and talking to Gail and trying to work out some of the logistics. But there's not a huge amount of startup expense if we're using their facility. Hopefully, we won't need to get a new computer or do anything like that. I think that we try to do it on the relatively inexpensive side as a starting point. And then if logistics demand that you buy more stuff later on, well, kind of burn that bridge when you get to it.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to just rewrite the ordinances? Modify the ordinances instead of all this trouble?
And take out every reference to enforcement?
Well, how are you going to enforce and what's that going to cost?
What do you mean by?
How are you going to enforce any infraction of an ordinance?
That's, that's what the court is for.
But who's going to write tickets or citations?
We're not doing that right now. This is just like for zoning violations.
So that's going to be an utter expense that we don't even know what that's going to be?
We haven't even gotten into that. We don't. That is a whole different level. We have no qualified law officer who's going to go around writing tickets. We have no set plans to do that. It could happen someday, but there's, but that's, but that is not in this plan.
I got several questions. Imagine that. First one, I guess, is, you know, I've heard it said several times tonight that, you know, we haven't had a court case in Pittkin in how long? Forty years? Close to it? What's driving that we need a municipal court in Pittkin today?
It's a state law.
Is it a state law that requires?
Yes, it is.
Or recommends that we have or requires?
It's required.
Only if your ordinances are as they are written.
So we could rewrite the ordinances though and meet the state law. Is that right, Jim?
I believe so, Eddie. I believe that, and I addressed this at the town meeting, the statute, and I gotta, hold on, give me a moment. The statute in question is 1310104. The municipal governing body of each city or, each city or town shall create a municipal court to hear and try all alleged violations of ordinance provisions of such city or town.
Okay, so how many other municipalities the size of Pittkin have a municipal court?
I don't know the answer to that, Eddie.
Does anybody, does anybody on the board, have any of you guys researched this to see what other municipalities the size of Pittkin have a court?
I believe that Jim said he was going to get in contact with, with other towns, possibly along the eastern plains, smaller towns, kind of the size of Pittkin, and see what they have done. That's what we're going to do.
And there's an association right of municipal courts in Colorado?
There's a municipal judges association, Eddie.
I just went online, just did a brief check. I could not find another community anywhere close to the size of Pittkin that had a municipal court. Not to say that there's not, but I couldn't find one. So are we trying to set a precedent here? Are we trying to say, you know what, this is Pittkin, we're going to be at the forefront? And a couple of other things. I couldn't hear for sure. Nancy, you said you talked with SERSA about these changes if we install the municipal court?
I did when we talked about getting an officer. And they, that's when I talked to them, not about a court. It was about getting the police officers.
And enforcement. And they said there wouldn't be much more charge?
There was no, it wasn't that much.
There's no additional?
I didn't say no additional. There's not much. It wasn't significant. I don't have the numbers with me. I didn't bring that book, but...
But there would be an increase in all likelihood? Because if we have a court, we're going to have to have enforcement, right? I mean, does it, okay. Does it make sense to have a municipal court if we don't have enforcement?
That's, that's the purpose of even having the court. If you don't have the court, then you can enforce nothing. Then, then all of your rules are merely voluntary. You're just, everything is voluntary. Everything.
Doesn't it depend on how the regulations are written or not?
We have, we have ordinances written. And there, and there are references to municipal court. There are references to fines. If you don't have a municipal court, then everything becomes voluntary.
I understand that part, but what I'm saying is if the regulations are going to be, from what I'm hearing, they need to be rewritten. Either way, if we had a court, if we don't have a court, Jim's recommendation is that they need to be rewritten, right?
No, I said a while ago that I would like to take the time to go through and confirm that there are no problems with the number of the older ordinances. But I didn't suggest that they need to be written at this time.
I didn't say at this time. I'm just saying, do they need to be?
I don't know.
Okay, without review, you wouldn't know.
That's correct.
Okay. So my understanding is that the mayor is the enforcement officer currently. There is an enforcement officer. Right, so we have an enforcement officer now. And we haven't had a court case in 40 years since the 80s. So we need to get something in place, or we're required by the state to get something in place. So is it my understanding, or maybe I misunderstood this, but if we do a court of record, does it require that there's an attorney present to represent the town?
I don't know the answer to that, Eddie. Gunnison, for a number of years, did not have the town attorney, who is Rod Landwehr. I don't know if you know Rod.
I knew Rod very well, yes.
Good man. Rod had no interest in municipal court. None. I believe that he was in court once, maybe twice that I recall. The city of Gunnison currently does have its city attorney at all of the court proceedings. So whether or not the town wanted to have the attorney present, that's a decision for the town.
Or is it the state statute that says they have to?
Certainly the better practice.
So it would be your recommendation then that we would have an attorney present every time the town of Pittkin goes into court?
I would submit to you that that is what they're doing now in Gunnison, and that's a better practice. Is, is that all, Eddie? For right now?
I think that's it for right now.
Okay.
I have a comment. You know, Eddie, everyone who sits on the silver plume for the last 32 years that I've been here, all you hear is people saying, oh, it doesn't matter. We don't, there's no enforcement in Pittkin. There's no police. There's nothing. So, you know, so it gives people the idea they can just do the hell what they want, you know? And they do. So this is good. We have to do it by state statute. But it's good that at least, you know, if someone gives us that attitude, we can say, okay, and do something about it. Instead of just saying, oh, just do whatever you want. There's no enforcement in Pittkin. I've heard it 100 times.
So if you're going to have a town, then you're, then you're going to have to have rules of some sort. If you say, we don't want rules, we don't want enforcement, then there's, then there's no point in having a town.
Yeah, just anybody come and do whatever.
So the town of Pittkin for the last 100 years has been what?
Yes, we have.
A place where anybody comes and does anything?
Well, do you, well, I can, speaking for myself, I've noticed probably in the last 10 years, things have just gotten more and more and more and faster, faster, faster. And, you know, people, I mean, I had the finger flicked at me pushing my grandson in the stroller because I was in some truck's way, I guess. I was not in the road. I was off on the thing, you know? It's just that kind of attitude that people have, some people have, that come out here and they bring the city with them.
Well, I apologize for interrupting you, ma'am trustee, but really, we're not, we're not talking about enforcement. This is just about whether or not there's a municipal judge or a municipal court being created.
Yes, and it's a good idea.
I'm just trying to keep it on task. Yes.
How was the last court case in Pittkin handled?
I wasn't here.
This was, took place in 1988. And I don't remember the date, but in the summer of 88. It was after my term had ended as mayor in the spring of 88. There was a violation of the zoning ordinance. And the, there was a setback violation, as I recall. I don't, I know who it was or where, but I don't know all the details. At this point, it's been a while since 1988. But the town did pretty much what happens today. They notified the property owner that he was in violation. And letters went back and forth and eventually he refused to comply. The structure that was built that was in violation, it had to do with porch and deck, that type of thing. And he refused to do anything about it. So the town board with the attorney at that time decided to prosecute, basically. They went to the current county judge at that time, which was Jerry Reese, I believe is his name, and asked if he would serve as the municipal judge, and he agreed to. So the court, basically, a court was set up by the town board for that case, just, you know, what you're talking about tonight, at the spur of the moment, essentially. And a date was set, court was held, and the town attorney acted as a prosecutor. And the property owner hired his own attorney, who was a previous town attorney, by the way. And the case was held with a jury. I think it was a six-member jury, as I recall.
I was just, just was curious though. Everyone keeps repeating that our ordinances don't have any teeth, but it appears to me that they do have teeth. I mean, it happened in the one court case that has happened. Ordinances were enforced, correct?
I wasn't here in 88.
I know, I'm just, just asking the question.
This just kind of sets it up legally so that, so that the process is, so the process is actually there. And the subject of money has come up. And I heard Jim say we could do this for $1,000 a year or, or whatever. A couple of meetings ago, we were talking about installing a restroom for summer visitors. And we pitched out numbers like $100,000. I never heard anybody, anybody stand up and say that that's too much. Everybody just seemed good with it. So, and now we're talking about a $1,000 to set up a court so we can enforce laws, and people are picking Eddie.
Mr. Mayor, maybe folks think that it's more than 100 times more important to have an extra bathroom than an extra attorney.
There are some people who are.
Okay, yes.
What seems like, just based on what has been said here, that when the one incident came up where there needed to be a follow-through on law enforcement and taking care of this one particular instance that Mr. Reese mentioned, well, it seems like those legal processes fell into place at that time. And there was a judge, and there was a hearing and what have you. So I'm kind of perplexed by the fact that if there is a legal system that worked in the past, then why all the hoo-ha and the need to do it any other way than what has been done in the past?
Because it's the state law.
State requires us to have a court.
When was that statute implemented? When was that state law put on books? So all this time, we've been in non-compliance as a county.
That is correct. And the other issue I would urge you to always consider is that, not having been here in 1988, I can't really address how the person that was charged felt about them creating a court for her or his benefit. But I think that if the court, if the logistics are set up ahead of time, you don't need to use them. But then folks don't feel like they're being picked upon by creating a court for them. That's just my perspective. Yes, sir?
Just curious, the previous meeting, you did say, we either have to have a municipal court or rewrite our ordinances, remove any reference to them. "We either have to have a municipal court or rewrite our ordinances or remove any reference to municipal court." Has further reading led that to be not true?
Well, what I said was pretty much that, that you either have a municipal court, not necessarily active, but established to handle violations that are referenced to in the ordinances.
Or remove references to municipal court.
Or the ordinances shouldn't talk about municipal.
Because everyone keeps saying, "No, we have to have a municipal court." I just wanted to clarify that there are two options here. And I don't want anybody to think I have an opinion one way or the other. I really don't know where I stand on this yet, but I just feel like everyone keeps saying we have to have one.
I believe that's what the statute says.
But unless we rewrite our ordinances to remove reference to municipal court.
I don't.
And I understand, I mean, that may take the teeth out of it, but, you know.
I don't think the statute provides for the flexibility unless you're a town that's really small and doesn't wanna buy, buy.
I know, that's not what I'm saying, though.
I wasn't trying to be.
But, but it was brought up previously that there weren't two options here. That, and I understand how a municipal court can then be a benefit to Pittkin, but I just, for all fairness, it's not like there's just solely one option here.
I thought there was.
I think at some level, non-compliance shouldn't be deemed to be an option. Yes, sir?
Oh, I, well, I remember you saying last meeting also that we could either rewrite them or have a municipal court. So I just wanted, is it, would it be possible to get a clarification on that? Because I hear, that was your firm opinion last meeting, and this is your opinion this meeting. Can we get, I just wanna know, can we get?
What I was trying to say was, look, you've got a bunch of ordinances that make reference to municipal courts. There is no municipal court. There is a statute that says that you have to have a municipal court. I don't think that there's an option to go back and rewrite all your ordinances to basically comply with your non-compliance. What I was trying to say was, look, you've got these ordinances, you're not following the state statute. There's an inconsistency.
I think he was kind of facetious a little bit.
Yeah, Jim, I remember you saying that, it was either January or February. But at that time, you had not looked it up yet, and later you said, "I'll look it up and I'll read into it and see, and then report."
I just think that this statutory language is obligatory. And I think that, really what I was trying to say is, look, you guys aren't in compliance. Your ordinances as drafted are just not right. I didn't say that, and I'm not saying that now.
I said that.
I'm not saying that. I, I, well, I'm, I'm not saying that you're not, you're not right to say whatever you want. I, I would not say that, though. Growing up is not an issue here. It's merely putting the protocols in place.
Jim, if I'm reading the 13-10-104, it's pretty clear. I mean, it doesn't say anything about, it says, "Municipal court created jurisdiction. The municipal governance body of each city or town shall create a municipal court to hear and try all alleged violations of ordinances provisions of such city or town." I mean, that's pretty clear, isn't it?
That's what I like.
No, thank you for reading that, because that's what we were.
That's, that's, that's all they say.
We were, I'm not saying you misled us purposely, I'm just saying that's the opinion we got last weekend, or last meeting.
It's all part of the plan.
So have you, have any ordinances been violated where people have had to pay a fine directly to you, Mayor, for, for trustees in the past?
Yes. Suzie did.
The only one I know of.
So you, you actually received payment for violation of ordinance?
I actually paid the town.
Oh, you got it?
I paid a penalty, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
And Suzie wasn't the only person, that's happened.
So there has been kind of a system in place where if there was an ordinance violation, somebody actually was obligated then to pay the town for a fine for not complying with the ordinance?
But, but Suzie is a good citizen, and she said, "Yes, I'll pay." If, if, if somebody says, "No, no, I won't, and I won't correct it, and I don't care," then we need the court.
I see, yeah.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
If, if and when we do set up the municipal court and we don't have an enforce, or you're the enforcement officer, but if the enforcement officer does not see the infringement, then is it just his word versus his word? And whoever complains is right automatically, or how does that happen?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna, this is mainly like for zoning ordinances and, and, and town ordinances. This is not for traffic violations.
No, and I'm not talking about the traffic violation, that's already in place for the sheriff.
So just like a noise violation?
I'm talking about, for instance, whatever, I mean.
A noise violation?
A noise violation, for instance. If the officer does not see or hear it, how does the defendant face their accuser?
Well, they would have a court trial. And if it's a criminal infraction, the burden of proof would be on the town to prove the charge beyond a reasonable doubt.
But these are noise violations I'm talking about.
Noise violation would probably be by preponderance of the evidence, which means more likely than not.
So what, I mean, it's his word versus?
A he-said, she-said is a challenging situation.
Yeah.
You know, dog barking cases in Gunnison, there's a 10-minute rule.
Right. We have that here, too.
Okay, so what typically happens is party picks up the phone, "Dang, dog is barking again." The enforcement officer shows up, parks, looks at the watch, and 10 minutes later knocks on the door and says, "We got a problem, I'm writing you a ticket." So how would that happen in this situation?
Yeah.
If the enforcement officer didn't hear the violation, the enforcement officer can still act based upon the representation from another party, but the judge is still ultimately gonna decide whether or not the people have met their burden in proving that there was, the violation actually occurred.
That just sounds like a really easy system to manipulate, to me.
Well, as, as, as far as noise violations go, I would hope that if somebody's dog was barking too much and, and somebody called and said, "Hey, could you keep the dog quiet?", I hope they would let the dog in.
And that's what this community is all about, in my opinion.
That's correct, that is correct.
That, that's why we're such an awesome community as it is. That's what I don't get, is why we need this, these teeth to these rules when we're already an honorable community.
Do you want us to, to read the state statute again?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you do if the enforcement officer is asleep or in the hospital or on vacation?
Oh, sure.
They're not even forced. I don't know where you go home.
If they're asleep, wake them up, yeah. If they're in the hospital, wish they'd get well. If they're on vacation, he probably or she probably should have delegated a replacement during their vacation.
So there have to be like special requirements that title someone to be a legitimate enforcement officer?
I don't believe so. I believe probably, and this is just shooting from the head, to be the mayor pro town. Yes, that's a big use. Okay, if there are any other questions? Okay, thank you.